Thirty-third hospital built by the government will cost 3X. The same hospital built by USAID will cost X. The same hospital built by Catholic Church will cost 0.8X. Why should that be that different? And therefore, we decided that we should standardize certain things. We should define what a classroom is. A primary school should consist of six rooms, headmaster's office. This is defined. And therefore, booths of entities are itemized. It is costed. So in future, we are going to build a classroom. You cannot come inside as twenty when somebody can build it for ten. So we decided that we must put, I can't tell myself, value for money. There are certain things which must be standardized, like schools. We know when we are putting up a school in Bogotá, you want to say it will cost slightly more than two times a school in Amasala. But even when you're going to do it, it isn't so. Labor and worker will be cheaper than Amasala. So in detail, it costs out the same. The cost is hopefully the same, no matter where you put it. But the figures we had, taking fiscal figures of hospitals and schools, those on the ground, were startling and mind-boggling. So we decided that now we're going to standardize. This is a regulation, define what a school is. Design it, let it be adopted as a definition of a school. This is a regulation, define a listed hospital. Define a regional hospital. Define a teaching hospital. Let's get all these costing. So we have standards, so not have a situation where in one case, one price of a hospital was about two and a half thousand. We must stop all those things. Let's be fair to ourselves as a country. And we also went on the roads. We have come through the data. We cannot have a situation when a mile of road down in Colombia is half the price of a mile of road down in Ghana of the same type of material. So we have to standardize all these things so that we have value for money. This is a good value definition. We must have value for money. And we are going very, very strongly on this matter. So that, yes, there will be tender, but we must have floor price that is well determined and scientifically and technically verified. So what have you done differently? Yes, we are doing many things that will make us have value for money. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a very, very intriguing question. And before I do that, let me tell you, my friends are here. Idiako is there. Some is here. I lived here. I was part of this group. And I went home to go and support the governments of the day. And I stayed all time, still there. So I'll urge you all, the first place, you know, I mean, don't stay for too long. Some people, if you are young, I mean, you have energy in you. I'm not young now, but energy in you to really come and help. But yes, what have we done recently? We are managing this economy differently. We are not allowing the economy to be on autopilot. We don't go and sleep and let the economy go on its own way. So in fact, we meet every week, every Tuesday, between the hours of eleven o'clock and maybe eight, ten o'clock. The team, nine of us, I think, the vice president sitting there, the senior minister there, the finance minister there, and there are two service there. There are all these nine people sitting there to look at the economy with a critical eye. Put it under a critical list. Find out where the problems are. Try to resolve the problems. You don't allow economies like ours, which is a very internal economy, American economy, you can let it just move on its own, but not ours. Because there are always problems going on. So we need to look at it very closely, and that is what we do. Of course, if you are seeing differently, I think what you are seeing is a different from the previous administration. And I'm not so sure that we even heard about who were the members of the economic management team. Much more knowing when they actually met, it would be one surprise in a year. But we meet every week so that we don't allow the economy to go there. But from a planning perspective, I'm the minister for planning. What we have done is that we have looked at what we actually promised people we'd done and that we are going to do. And we've converted that into a national plan. And we've made sure that these plans are actually influenced. I mean, the plans, what we intend to do in them, influence the budgets. So the budgets are not done happen that way. The budgets are driven by what we think we want to do for Canyans. Free senior high school, we have the money for it, right? Getting the people, the children, the school feeding, we have the money in the budget. And of course, as we have just said, reducing taxes, we take, we are cop a sense of that and we let it reflect in the budget. So we really are doing something differently. We don't go in there and say that this has been previously done. This is what you want to do, and this is where the budget, the monies are spent. If you do that, if there is no link between what you really want to do and what the money is used for, nothing gets done. And so the things that we are doing are, we're doing them with a thought economy. And that is why we spend so much time meeting, sitting, hours on hours. And of course, I'm talking about the EMT. The cabinet itself, every other week, they sit. And we sit for a time twelve hours on cabinet room. Right? Because the problems are minimal. And what you require that we spend a lot of time. And of course, you have the head of you, sitting at the head, the president of the Republic. He will not go and sleep. So how much more, eh, 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 we have water. So it is seriousness. And people are doing that out of their heart, from their hearts. And real concern for the welfare of the Canyans. And I think that is the difference. That is the difference. The difference is that the people who are in the state, who are handling your country are doing that with sincerity and honesty. So when you go and sleep, it's sleep privately because the economy is in the right hand.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. So at this point, I'll read two questions, and then we'll come back to the audience. So the first question from the submitted questions. Why hasn't the EMT tackled the issue of black market or foreign exchange if they know a contributes to the form of the C? So this is the black market that's supposed to be in the form of the C. And then the second question. This is piggying on the tax, port reduction. Can the government set up mechanisms where Canyans in the diaspora can pay their port fees and charges here in the diaspora before they get to Ghana?
Well, I think I sympathize with the one who put the person on the black market. I did say at the EMT, systemively, listening to it on there. Now we have forest growths that are sanctioned by Bank of Ghana. And there are rules governing the forest growth. Now you go to Accra now, you see a lot of people, most of them not Canyans, changing money along the airport road in Makola to do everywhere. Now, these people are briefing the laws of the land. The governor is not the one to arrest them. Am I right? The governor has a road to play by putting the relevant rules and regulations for establishing the forest growth. So that when you change the money officially, you have to give some data. And I gave that example there that I come from Senegal. I was changing three hundred dollars. I have to give my passport number, my name, et cetera, et cetera, before changing the three hundred dollars. So that there's some data taken from me. I can't be doing that every hour. They will suspect me of something, isn't it? But if you have a situation where you just put the money down and you collect your cities and go, then I can count twenty times a day and nothing will happen to me. So we decided that Bank of Ghana, the Minister of Interior, should get down now and tackle this problem headlong because it is illegal. That's why you are described as black market. And I agree with you. I think perhaps by the end of the month, which I all hear the results. But it's a security program. It's not the central bank program. But the central bank has its rules on how to allocate money to the forest growth. But there are people who are not even Canyans, changing this money openly on the market. And it is the police who should arrest them because it is Senegal. So we have to, I think we work on it. There are police who should do it. The governor should not make arrests. The hacker question was. Yes, that's a very tricky question. It is tricky because how do you, when do you determine the fees? The fees will be determined when the booths have arrived in Ghana, isn't it? And assessed. I don't understand what do you buy, who can pay the fee here? Because first of all, we must determine how much is to be paid. Am I right? I mean, if you don't determine how much to be paid, how, what do you pay? So the question is that the point of determination is when the booths have arrived. And values are taxed and relevant rules applied in terms of taxes. And we have recently slapped the tax by fifty percent. But when that amount is determined, it's when payment is expected to be made. And then you want that at that point, we ask you to pay the money in New York or in Washington?
Online.
Online. Why not? Why not? I mean, transfer, this is, we are paying money through, money transferred to, to Gaurav and what? Yes, that can be done. But it's part of the digitalization of the economy. Because we are now trying to digitize the economy. So I did this something which is a question of agreements. If you put the relevant strategies in place, it can be done. But you can only pay it when the amount has been determined. That's the one, the point I want to make. It's not like you pay it in advance, so that you don't pay in advance. You can only pay when the exact amount has been determined at the point of.
Thank you very much. So at this point, I'll do two ladies as the first time. I'll come back. We have a lot of questions you can ask. So let's do the two ladies here and then one gentleman. Well, the two ladies come first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irene Kei. And my question is for the Minister of Planning. How can millennials in diaspora get involved? You're encouraging us to come back and get involved while we're young and vibrant. And so how can, what are some specific ways that we can get involved in this, the planning, the development sector? Whether it's not necessarily to come and solve the problem, but also just to shadow or just be able to learn what's going on so that we can bring our resources from here, there, and, you know, bridge those gaps? What are some of the specific ways that we can do that?
Good evening and thank you all so much for coming. My name is Dr. Sybil Pencil. And I have a two-part question. We started off today appropriately recognizing Catherine and her contributions to Ghana. And we've also talked about many of us in the diaspora coming back or going back to Ghana. But the truth is, many of us have been contributing to Ghana in many ways, using our own time, our own resources, our own money. So in the spirit of leveraging all the resources, one of the plans in place to utilize us as the resource that we are and all that we are giving to Ghana, even though we don't live in Ghana. Now my field is the healthcare sector. In keeping with Ghana first, and I believe in that. And that's why I spend my time and my money and my resources volunteering in Ghana and teaching in the medical school. So I'm going to ask a controversial question. Which of us would go to Ghana first for our healthcare? And if not, what are we doing about that to make Ghana first in healthcare?
Good evening, one of your gentlemen. My name is Effia Ousso. I am a data scientist. And I guess a lot of you talked, as you were talking, you cited, you know, relying on data. I would like to know, you know, databases, how much of that is a priority? And how's your government going to invest in databases? For example, I know there is a database that tracks, you know, the youth for the national service program. And the last time I talked with other colleagues in Ghana, they didn't mention that there wasn't actually a database that tracked them, post, you know, they are posting to know the employment rate or whether they are doing well or whether they are branching into pre-opherships. And so that would be my question. Thank you.
We've asked three questions. I don't know if that's okay for now, or you can take a few more before you answer the three questions.
Good evening. My name is Irene Ossai. I'm a businesswoman slash social worker. So my question is, and Ossai, for the first time, you guys are putting a much-needed foundation for Ghana and the financial sector. I want to know, how do you assess the outcome? And how does that translate to an African Canier?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Solomon Ousou from Denver, Colorado. I'm here because of Karamse. We have these Chinese guys degrading our environment and polluting our water bodies left, right, center. I like this waiting here, Ghana face. I'm a mining engineer. And I know that these Chinese guys have identified opportunities in the country. And then when they work, our laws don't allow foreigners to engage in small-scale mining, only landscape. Why do we have Chinese guys mining under small-scale mining license? And also degrading our environment? And when they are arrested, they just repatriate them without putting them to jail? Can any of us go to China and degrade their environment without, without the punishments? No. So now, Aisha Wu. This question goes to the senior minister, who's supposed to supervise all the activities of the other ministers. And also to the Minister for Planning and Evaluation. Why did you repatriate Aisha Wu without prosecuting her or enforcing her to restore the degraded lands and the polluted water bodies? Thank you.
We know, we know that the senior is out of there. And we know that, we know that I'm saying in a sense, that I'm saying. Anybody from Botana, Akotia area, that's a boom on your region, that I'm saying. So it's not that people telling me about that I'm saying, but I know it from Cairo. It is a courage of Kufalu, that man that I'm saying in the country. Before then, that I'm saying was doing all over the country. We came and we discovered that. People are mining everywhere, including forest reserves. So the best forest reserves in Ghana were being degraded by people. Now ask the same person, who brought the Chinese to Ghana? And who the Chinese working for? The Canyans drew this and drew that. The Chinese themselves cannot just come, enter a particular forest and start mining. They are doing so, or we have some Canyans. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, they are the Canyans. And therefore, the immediate problem rest, first of all, in the law of us, Canyans. Karamse is bad. And we had carried, it's not foreign estate and everything, we had carried to stop it until we have put certain rules and regulations in place. For instance, most of the three main rivers in the country, with Prag and Angola, which are sources of our water waste department, the sources of our drinking water, was completed every with Karamse activities. To extend that, we were spending about four times the same amount of money to do the purification of these rivers because they have been badly handled by Karamse. So as a government, we look at it from many angles. The cost of drinking water to the African Canier. People didn't see our problem. It was so expensive now running Ghana Water and Fish Corporation because of the polluted water. And the fact that we must purify that water to a level that it can't spot out. And that calls for investment and money, which we didn't have. So we money. Now, we did so and put certain rules and regulations in place. As I speak, as you might have heard, we have banned the importation of excavators into Ghana. We didn't put it so with joy. Escavator is an equipment for construction as well. So to leave it for Karamse. But through statistics, the number of excavators we have in Ghana, the number we need for the construction nursery, and found out that we have exceeded the limit by over five hundred percent. And therefore, most of those coming in are not coming in for road construction. They are coming in for other activities. So we have legalized our path. So when they are coming, they stop. Now you cannot operate mining three hundred yards on other side of Idi River in Ghana, it's not safe.
But they are still mining the water bodies.
And if you have entered it, you cannot mine also other riverbank. People have to learn, set the rules and regulations. Somebody has to enforce a law. It's a force in them. So we must all be very clear in a mine, as division of labor. There's what, division of what, labor. People have to enforce, but somebody must come up with a guideline, with a policy, with what constitutes and outside. The government has done that. But if anybody minds the river, it constitutes an offense to them. And that person must be arrested and prosecuted.
Our national law was left to walk freely without prosecution.
Now, it is going to run that point down. And when, when a country goes beyond Karamse, there are so many other matters which come with, therefore, what you don't understand. Like I'm telling you today, what you don't understand. If a Canier is arrested here, sometimes negotiations can take place with the Ghana government and the other government for whatever reasons you may not know. And there are all kinds of things which go on. Ghana has a very good relationship with China. They're the main company that is helping to develop the infrastructure system in Ghana is Sanamite. It's a Chinese company. The one that's going to help process our boss site and provide about two billion dollars to us. So when they have these kind of agreements, there are other things behind the scenes. Putting that they did in jail in Ghana is not going to solve your family problems. It's not going to make you happy or me happy. That's not important. The most important thing that has been imported out of Ghana. So we must, Karamse is another, I think, that there are many other things beyond what you see in these matters. And everybody is wide awake. The most important thing is that we have found this, we have established regulations, and we are protecting our motherhood. We have the far more important than one like this one who has been imported out of Ghana. The next one is our database. Tell it, we have special departments and special services who are responsible for compiling data for use. All the percentages we are giving within what the man of our system, they are being with by other specialized offices in the country who are handling data for us. And therefore, we leave those data details to these officers, who are specialized. If we have any problem, we pass it on to them. But so far, our data offices have gone in the center. Ghana's SKA service is one of the best, they are co-ones. And they have been claimed as such. So I think generally, we have our standards right. And we have improved them from time to time. Now, the healthcare, that means we are very careful about your question. Healthcare is key. And whatever we can do to improve on healthcare, so that our first choice of healthcare will be facilities in Ghana. And I believe that we are working very hard to improve on this healthcare. Today, at the World Congress, the name, Ghana was asked, and I was specifically asked, to talk about the National Health Insurance Dream of Ghana. It's the first office site in Africa, although our full is Kenya and Ethiopia. Having a universal health coverage of healthcare, the first I understand. Now, it's running into difficulties because of the way certain things were handled. Healthcare is important. Good health is good work. And whatever we can do to help make, we must do it. We really appreciate the quality of healthcare you have here and those of you here who also have a low heart. And madam, I'm very impressed about your involvement in teaching at our medical school and assisting. Continue. Whatever ideas you have to assist us improve on our system, do so. You can put some of them to us even in memorandum so that we can use it to improve on what exists. But I'm telling you that we are very keen about providing first-class medical care. Legon has put up the DeGon Medical Center. And it is aiming to be super first class now. It's going to be an spot of excellence to even provide what we believe to be medical export. Tourism, medical tourism. The first part of it will be in operation by First July. Many, this was put up by Israeli company, it's really first class. And therefore, we are looking at medical care at a tertiary level to make sure that people look at Ghana first when they are looking for medical care. Because people have money, they can afford it. The facilities must be available for people to access it. And we try to do this at tertiary level. And Legon is taking the lead. It's going to be a super core goal from that angle.
Yeah, I think it was a very wonderful question. I think some of them are very interesting. In the time, this, let me assure you that, you know, the senior minister talked about Sanamite SKA services. Additionally, that SKA services uses sensors data to do analysis. But what we realize is that, you know, administrative data is very difficult. And therefore, we are trying, very, working very hard to ensure that administrative data is available. That is where you can get information, and you were referring to perfectly. That is where you can get the information within, between sensors series. Because sensors are already conducted ten years in ten-year intervals. And therefore, you may not have accurate data. We are using a lot of innovative ways of trying to capture data using satellite imaging and other, you know, those kind of things. We are trying also even to use data on phones to really pick up some of this. But you see there, there is an issue of privacy. And that is what we are trying to do to help into parliament to, to enable the South and North, that will actually cover it in terms of the privacy. So we are working hard in trying to make sure that data that traditionally were available can now be available. So we are, we are, we are on course on that front. I mean, a lady who asked a question as to how I mean, a lady who asked the question as to how you can enter the Ghana, eh, you can come back home. I think I'll, I'll let you be very honest with you. I had difficulty in getting back home. You know, when I got home, the system was actually trying to push me back. Because each time that I talk, they said, this guy do hide things from me because he's, Americans do American money. He doesn't understand what is going on here. But you see, there's nothing we can do from Ghana, between Ghana and America. Systems are also, obviously, the whole thing is very different. But then, you know, so have the courage to come in there, young people in this, eh, eh, information technology, the new technologies that are emerging, you are the ones who are chosen to have to turn that force. We are getting to, some of us don't have, we don't can, cannot even use the computer. But you guys are there, so try in those technology areas, try to come back home. But when you get there, don't be deterred by, you know, that the system trying to lose your algorithm. But, but, eh 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 eh, honestly, I don't, I'm not suggesting that you move right away into Ghana. You have to go and come, go and come, whatever. You see, there was a question about, eh, there's a question that you, how is all the tolls in the area, how that it translates into money? Hello, please, please, how does that actually translate into people's, eh, money in people's hands? Let me see this. You see, when you talk, when we start talking about economics, you know, people think that it has nothing to do with what goes into people's pocket, but that is not the case. You see, in healthy society, eh eh, the welfare of the people, the well-being of the people from a economic perspective, based on the per capita income. The American per capita income is almost about, eh, it's well over twenty, thirty thousand. The one in Ghana is almost about two thousand. Not being the American is, eh eh eh, is better off than the Ghanaian. Uh, when we took home, the per capita income of this country was five thousand Ghana zibis. As I speak today, we are heading to ten thousand Ghana zibis. Which means that the, the welfare of the people have been increasing since twenty fifteen until after this call. But the problem is this, economic, eh, from the economic perspective, you always consider an, an, an average. You just divide in advance everybody and you think that everybody is doing about it. That's not how the world works. Some people can get more of it, others can get less of it. So for governments like ours, what we do in making sure that, you know, we redistribute this income is what we call a social intervention. Free senior high school, bring the money back into your pocket, because you're not taking it out. National health insurance, you are not, you are not going to take the money out of your pocket to, eh, eh, to, eh, to go to hospital. So the money stays in your pocket. Free, so having given food to your kids, when they go to school, you're not going to buy food for them. So the money comes to your pocket. You know, government doesn't usually put money into your pocket directly. But if you are responsible government, you have to find a way to ensure that money doesn't get out of the pocket to the people so that they can keep some more. But those who cannot do that, especially the indigenous, the old people, what we do is that we try and give them direct cash transfers. We call that lead. So when you go to your villages, you see that your grandmother is on your hand, and those poor people, government gives them over seventy dollars every, eh, month, every two weeks so that they can actually get money in their pocket directly. Because they do not have that, any of that money in their pocket. So indeed, when the economic indicators are good, the welfare of the people are also uh, when the economy, the market is staying, the government intervenes. And that is why you see government intervening in those areas, reducing taxes. And of course, we talked about taking the taxes from, eh, the Chinese from the port, minimizing it. Why do we do that? The things that people, eh, do bring into the country, it comes cheaper and people who not spend, maybe a hundred zibis that you're going to spend to buy something, they're asking you maybe eighty zibis. That's what this is, gets into your pocket. So that is the way that we do it. We cannot really go there and say that, well, you take this money, you take that money. But we intervene in a way that, you know, money that you have earned in your pocket will stay in there. Those who cannot earn, you try and get the money. So that is the way that we are managing this economy and that is why people are better off than, eh, they were.
Hello, uh, so, so we are going to they are going to, no, the line cannot continue. A minister, you have to, you cannot continue. We cannot continue, please, please. The, the, the gentleman in the African way.